It's seven o'clock on Thursday, May twenty-fifth. Starting a planning board meeting in Grafton. I have I have minutes and agenda. Amelia Pishing could not make it, and so Paul Olivier sent it for her. And then Russell Portriss, the Select Board Executive, also cannot make it. So. Anyone else want a minute or an agenda? Alright, so we've got Angus Gorman, Alice Roy, Jake Vogel, Maureen Riley, Sabrina Kerwin, and Paul Olivier. I'm going to start my thing. All I'm doing is starting a video and taking a video of the table. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, right on. Okay, um, let's look at the, um, let's look at the April twenty-seventh minutes. And there's a few suggested changes that we can try to find a compromise on. But those changes are noted on the agenda. And when we're ready to discuss, we can just start discussing. Did it look at this so far?
Yes.
Just to clue you in, Rich emailed at UMIF all that Rich has emailed.
Yes.
Alright, and I think his suggestion is legitimate, although I think that his suggested text is a little bit more detailed than the minutes would ever typically contain, especially in something that wasn't really a planning board topic. And so I mean Jake, you're not a member, but you are here and you did see that, and wouldn't it be the worst in the world to include you? That Rich pointed out that you made, he did it in a roundabout way, but he pointed out that there were multiple public comments. I had not included any of his comments or your comment in the public comment. I was simply expecting to add this line to make it clear that you had, and I don't know what you think about that.
Well, I guess I know why, but is there a reason he weren't including Rich's?
No, no, I'm including Rich's too. I think that his blurb is, is superfluous.
Oh, and if that is, can I just crash?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, definitely.
I guess just a little.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't want to waste any time on this. We don't need to be wasting time on this to begin with, but does anyone have a problem with my? Rich has a long blurb about things, and he had talked about the public fool system, and I don't really want to go there. So I think the way to put it is Rich expressed his distaste for the public school system and the tax money associated with his operation, and he believes the money could be better spent elsewhere. He might not like it to be concise, but I don't think he would disagree with that statement.
Concise is good.
What do you think, Jake? Basically catches the gist of it, right?
Probably.
Okay, cool. Let's just go with that. Anyone feel like making a motion to accept these as? We would simply be adding my tentative suggestion to the public comment section. So I'd entertain a motion to?
I'll make that motion to accept these.
The minutes amended?
Yep.
Alright. Alright, all in favor? Okay, great. That's wonderful. Jake, thanks for your participation on that. And well, correspondence, we have received a return to sender. It was a certified mail that I imagine was in a butter for the Tom Kovich subdivision. These things happen. And I've just, if we can't reach them by certified mail, it's going to be very challenging to reach them otherwise. So the best thing to do is to simply attach it to the subdivision in the filing where I filed it upstairs in the town office. And there's a note on it as to why, and usually we don't have to cross that bridge at all. The other correspondence is we received information on the Grafton Planning Board budget versus actual expenditure. Looks like we have our $200 budget. We have spent $25 on supplies. Uh, no, we haven't. That is an L chip fee which will be reimbursed when the okay, sorry. We haven't spent any money. We spent $25. We used our bank account to cover $25 for the L chip fee, which is the the, the fee for conservation that's included in every subdivision. And when the Tom Kovich check clears through the town, the town will put $25 of that back into the planning board budget. So in effect, we have spent $0 this year. So that's just some information for us. And then, um, business. I have received a phone call, which I took longer to return the call than I meant to, but someone was looking to merge three properties in a voluntary merger. And I saw that the provided sheet only has two. I called the registry of deeds to ask what they would like, and they said, "You put your planning board signature on it, we'll do anything you want." And so it's, uh, it's $12 to record one page. It's another $4 to record a page after that for a voluntary merger. But they did suggest it was perfectly fine to simply clearly handwrite a third book page, date, map, and lot number somewhere where there's room on this page, and make it clear somehow that it is three lots being merged together. And as long as it's done tightly, there wasn't an issue. So we may see a triple voluntary merger come down the pike, and we just know that we can, we can do that. And we're allowed to get creative according to the registry.
Is this three small properties?
I think so. I didn't get to actually talk to the person, but I think I know where it is. And I could be completely wrong, but I get the impression it might be some properties on Kilton Pond, but I don't know that for a fact, so. Alright, um, let's see. Other business, I mailed the Tom Kovich subdivision. And so that's all, and they have paid for it, so that's all clear and in the registry's hands. And see, there was, actually, there was one more correspondence. Last time I did this, my video stopped recording. I'll start right back up if someone can remind me. Gary Whitney emailed me an informational courtesy for potential planning board interest. He was doing some hiking in the areas concerned about public being kept off of a likely public way. And he digged a little deeper. He's pretty good at getting to the bottom of, of things. And we had a little back and forth discussion, but the basic gist of it is that we are both under the impression that there are a number of Classics Roads in town, which, and in other towns too, I think, where the abutting property owners are misinterpreting the subject to gates and bars clause and actually locking the gates. I know that on Stevens Road, there was actually a time when the gate was locked and a fake United States Forest Service shield was tacked to a tree. And we all know that there is no national forest in Grafton or Springfield. And it was clearly just an attempt to dissuade people who didn't know any better. And subject to gates and bars, and the RSA, it's very clear that these are not to be locked, that the public needs to be able to open the gate, shut it behind them, and it's for agriculture containment and stuff like that. And people abuse that because they suppose that the prospective users don't know, don't have the legal firepower, aren't bold enough to, to test it, et cetera. And yeah, and no one likes, like, high horsepower Jeeps ripping up public rights away. And that's usually where the retaliation comes from, but at the same time, it remains a public right of way. Anyways, Gary was concerned about the extension of Cherry Hill, which we believe is still a Class 6. He's pretty sure it is, and just wanted to be transparent about the value of Classics Roads and them being public rights away. So that was not really immediately a planning board concern, although there is. I, I, I think, I think it is, and, and he hinted at that, that there is a town map of the town roads posted on the wall, which allegedly is the planning board's business. And since we're all done with our subdivision regulations and completely finished with our new master plan, we have all the time in the world to attack that, so.
Is there also a safety issue, having those roads on, with the gate that's locked?
Well, I can offer one interesting anecdote, and that is Stevens Road is on the corner of the Pluff's House on Kinsman Highway, and it goes into Springfield and comes out on four A at that point called Old Grafton Road. So it's inter-town. And Springfield doesn't maintain it, but they, they post it, no wheel vehicles from March to May or something, you know, like mud, no, no one in mud season, like, preserve it for the rest of the time. And there is a gate. It's not locked. And for the rest of the year, you can enter from four A, go up through Springfield, up and over the top of the mountain, come back down, and after almost getting stuck many times, come to a locked gate in Grafton. And that's where it becomes a real safety issue. If, if the consistency of locking at both ends is there, well, you know, that's too bad because someone is prohibiting a public way from being used. But when you can start at one end, get all the way to the other end, and need to lock the gate, that's just downright stupid.
Who's locking the gate?
The, the neighboring property owner who is and this comes right back to the, like, malicious versus ignorant, if you will. We don't actually know. A lot of people, I think, probably actually do think that they are allowed to lock a gate on Classics Road because it's the subject to gates and bars. But the RSA is very clear that you are not allowed to lock a gate. But the people who just read the, don't read the fine print, I think they may be led to believe that they can, that, oh, why would you have a gate if you can't lock it? But I think there's also other people who are very fully aware that they're not supposed to, but they just do it anyways and wait for somebody to actually give them a hard time, because most people don't. They just turn around and, you know, keep their mouth shut. Yeah.
It could be a safety issue though.
For sure. It, it, it is, and I, I think in that instance, I, I haven't been there in years, but I think that got resolved after, like, I think a Jeep winched the gate open because they knew it was a public right of way. They knew it wasn't supposed to be locked. I mean, a lot of these off-road community people are very much up to snuff on the laws and the ethics and, you know, just a couple drunk good old boys. Don't give them a good name, but they, a lot of them are very responsible. Yeah. I just gotta start my thing back up. Should we get drunk good old boys on the four A? So I've been doing a lot of research on land use in general, and the Classics Roads, as long as they're well, I don't think they're a safety issue as such, just exist, in their existence. Like
No, I was thinking what in the case of a fire or an accident, the, the, somebody needs an ambulance up in there.
And there's a gate, like, locking it.
That's what I was.
Yeah, yeah, I got you, yep.
Does, does it have, would they even try though, on a six class?
When I signed the waiver when I built my place on Classics Road, I live on Old Kinsman Highway, which is a Classics Road that crosses the Nethfield. I'm in, I'm in Grafton. But I had to sign a waiver saying I did not need to be rescued. But the understanding was, you know, you plowed your road, it's not a mud pit, like, we'll make a decent effort. That was, and I, I trust that just fine.
I was thinking of, like, fire apparatus, but I'm sure they just have big old bolt cutters. They don't let anything stop them.
No. Bobby Arrows was pretty, uh, pretty proud to say that he would have really plowed right through all the parked cars at Grafton Pond if he didn't get through there. All the people parked in the middle of the road, it was, the cars aren't going to be there. Anyways, roads, another thing to, and the, the whole discontinuance versus Classics status. I don't know, are you guys familiar with all that? A, a town can vote to discontinue a road entirely, meaning that it is no longer a public right of way. It has to go on the warrant. And my personal belief is there are very few reasons to throw up a road like that, that, like, keeping public rights away are valuable for public exploration and valuable for future development. And it's, it just, there's got to be a really compelling reason, but that's, that's an opinion. And I think there are so many Classics Roads because it used to be more consistently settled like 150 years ago or whatever.
But it was mostly farming and logging at that.
Right, because, you know, cellar holes all over all these abandoned roads, and so it's, uh, someone lived somewhere. Yeah, 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 it's kind of fun. Well, we should add the road thing to our list of things to consider, but I can't say that that's going to be a huge priority. You know, across my mind, I wonder if we should consider delegating one task to each of us, rather than all try to collaboratively, collaboratively do each one. And I don't know. And this doesn't have to happen immediately, but I, I'm happy to draft a subdivision regulations. And I, we, we went through it for the last couple of years, little bit, little bit, little bit, and it was, like, really hard just because of how many different opinions there are. It's, it's hard to actually make any changes. Whereas maybe drafting something from scratch and then, like, looking at it all, altogether would be easier than deciding to pull this or pull that. I don't know. In case of the master plan, maybe, I mean, you've, you've expressed a fair amount of interest in that, although biting that off as an individual would be a huge task.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to take it one little chunk at a time, maybe each person who wants to.
Everyone else?
Look through it. See what needs to be fixed and what needs to be updated or deleted.
I mean, Russell made some really good points last meeting, and I want to tie back into what he is hoping to share with us for this meeting, but he, he made a point that the efficiency of representative democracy is huge. Can you imagine if every single decision the Select Board made had to be put on the town warrant? Nothing would ever get done. And so, like, the, the potential to do a master plan that is relying on the trusted opinions of a number of elected officials instead of having to, we'd have to look into the legitimacy of that, because there may be some requirements for surveys and everything, but I don't want to, like, pretend like we know everything that everybody in town wants. But if we do want to make a new master plan, it may be sensible to try to to use our own I mean, I don't know if opinions is the right word, but like, make projections as best we can as arctic board members and see if the result is anywhere near what the bulk of the townspeople would want.
It seems that other master plans that I've seen or read, which aren't many, are really the work of, of, you know, lots of input, lots and lots of input from as many people as you can get involved. Anybody who's willing to be involved.
That was sort of my impression too, and so, like, a balance of as much input as possible with not having too many cooks in the kitchen to, like, make it too slow.
Yeah, so I think it'd make, it'd probably make sense that the planning board kind of spearhead the effort, but to, you know, have community nights or whatever, you know, whatever they are, to bring people in, to get your opinion about, you know, what do you think the town should look like?
Yeah.
How long did it take to, like, do it?
I don't know. I mean, two of the crafters of it are still here in town, Jenny and Paul Jalber. They're both still in town. They should probably try.
I could invite them.
I think we ought to. I don't see any reason not to.
I like that I can invite them here.
Just to hear what it was like in eighty-seven or eighty-eight.
What did you learn? What went well, what didn't go so well?
Like, what was frustrating, what, yeah.
See what changes they would suggest.
Right.
Seeing some, they've been here longer than all of us.
Yeah, yeah.
They might have some insight into what they think people might want to see.
Yep. Sabrina, what, if you were to get into any of this stuff, what's the most appealing to you? Do you like the idea of the subdivision regs? Do you like the idea of the master plan? Do you have any other planning board related stuff that you would latch on to?
I know you said it's not a high priority, but I am, uh, would be interested in the Classics Roads.
Alright, no, that's, that's awesome. Okay, so tying into the last thing that the board probably had to do, and Maureen, maybe you can offer some insight into this, but when Russell, I can't remember if it was when Russell was running or after he got elected to the Select Board, he and I talked a little bit, and he said that he was really frustrated by how this town, like, operates, like, anything they have to spend money on, it's like a crisis. And that the idea would be to save money, get some savings accounts, get the ability to plan ahead and have the ability to pay for things when they needed to be paid for without feeling like it was completely draining all the funds. And so that's, I mean, his hope for this evening was to talk a little bit about capital improvement plans. I mean, the irony of this is I believe the planning board is required to exist in order for any of the town functions to have a capital improvement program. And the, the planning board itself does not have one. I don't expect it needs to be big money. But that's something that we would need to spearhead as a board.
Wouldn't it typically be the Select Board or, like, the Budget Committee that would put together a capital improvement plan?
Possibly, but I think that let me, let me look real quick and start this right back up. Russell says, "My biggest thing to talk about getting department heads to come up with a capital improvement plan so we can plan for major expenses. We have a master plan that allows us to venture in that direction, but the request needs to come from the planning board." I said, "I'll try to start that discussion tonight." He said, "I think it's best for department heads to throw us information and start there." They need to, they know what they, okay, sorry, I'm going to start that again to be directly. "I think it's best for department heads to throw us information and start there. They know what they need 10 years from now." That's giving us an awful lot of credit, but right, I'm going to start this back up. So it, uh, it sounds to me like the board needs to decide that they would like a capital improvements plan. And, you know, there's discussion about wanting to, well, we want to try to make a new master plan, and we don't know if we're going to need to pay somebody to help us with that. I mean, I, I could totally toss a coin on whether we're going to figure out how to do it ourselves, or we're going to throw up our hands and go ask Upper Valley Lake Center for you to do it, and I, I don't know which one's right. But if we did use them, it would be thousands of dollars. Not, not tens of thousands.
No.
Yeah.
Two, five, which does need to, do we need to think about increasing our budget for just such purposes?
Well, that would be, I mean, that's kind of my suggestion, is that, like, our budget is super minimal, and we have demonstrated that we are frugal with it, like, we've never used it. We dip $25 out of it and it pays right back.
Mostly used for paying postage and things like that.
And it's always reimbursed. I think we had a dollar or two surplus because we charged a dollar or two more than the mailing. So it's like, um, you know, it's not like we're going out to dinner on the tax dollars. So, um, I don't have a problem with adding money to a capital improvements program. If, you know, these things happen, it, it's determined that funds aren't needed, they're dissolved, it goes back in the general fund. It's not like we're going to try to blow it. And, and that's, I remember, like, an outing up in college, this, like, budget of quite a lot of money. It's like $19,000 a year. You know, this is for, like, thousands of kids and, like, lots of, you know, canoes and kayaks and rock climbing gear and tents and things, and the van and all, all this stuff. But if you didn't spend it, you weren't getting that again the next year. And I think we can be bigger and better than that. Like, we can take money and not spend it. I feel like that's something that we can, and we can demonstrate trust.
But it would be nice to have the one-on-one.
So what, what kind of numbers do you think? Thousand dollars a year?
I would say a minimum of $1,000 a year, because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think to join them up for, like, some people, it's $2,000.
That's where we are, yeah.
But that isn't going to come out of your budget. It's the town that would be paying for that. It's not, the Upper Valley Lake something region planning commission is not
It's a good point.
Your responsibility. It's the town's responsibility. It's, it's.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so it will, it will not come out of your budget, so don't.
It still needs to be budgeted.
But your master plan, if you want to hire someone to help you with it, you will be paying for that. So you might want to put some money aside in your budget next year for your master plan. So you might wanna put some money aside in your budget next year for your master plan. And Lake, Upper Valley, blah, 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 will also help you with it. They help you with lots of stuff because you belong, but related to the master plan, they will ask for some money from you for the master plan.
I see the nuance of what you're saying, although I feel like painting it that way might just be making it look like we're untrustworthy.
I don't understand.
The planning board is going to be the one who needs to pay for it, whether it's through raising the fund through a capital improvement or not. I mean, the whole, like, being part of the planning commission is, is something that the planning board would use. Like, I, I don't think we should pretend like we are some entity separate from the town.
Well, what I'm saying is in the past, we did belong to it. The money never, ever came out of the planning board budget.
Was it from the general fund or what was the...
It was, oh gosh.
Selectmen's budget?
It was in the selectmen's budget.
Yeah.
It was a line item in the selectmen's budget. And it was the selectmen that decided not to belong to it anymore. So if it belonged to planning board, it would be the planning board that would decide they didn't wanna belong to it anymore.
I mean, I don't, if, if, if we wanted to be a member, we, it sounds like what we would do is we would plead our case to the select board and ask to have that money put into the budget. Yep, is what it sounds like.
They, they also asked me at their select board money, at one of the select board meetings how I felt about that. And I told them that, you know, it was a good idea because when we belong to it, planning board had a lot of access to it related to legal questions that you had also. And the select board decided not to go with it anymore because we're on the tail end of the commission. It's Enfield and Keenan and all those towns up there who benefit more from their mind and it's related to highways and things like that. And we were really on the tail end and we didn't benefit a lot from the work that they did when they got together. So that's part of the reason why the select board decided not to go with them anymore. But I really feel it would be a good idea to do it. And you can always not join next year, I mean, the year after if it doesn't work for you. And I think I said this before, one of the reasons that I think it's important, one of the reasons is we have no bus service out here and they are related to also helping to get bus service to come into different towns.
Are you talking like the pants transit style?
The one that goes into, the one that goes from Keenan to Lebanon or whatever.
Yeah.
If we belong to that, we can kind of maybe pressure them to get them to come all the way into Grafton, which I feel is really important for some people to get to the hospital or shopping. I mean, but we are on the last leg of it.
Yeah, the Mexico and senior bus that comes, but you...
But you have to call for it, don't you? Yeah, yeah.
Interesting.
So that, that's one of, one of the benefits of going, but like I said, I had so much access to the legal stuff when I was brand new on the board. And the lawyer that, that I, I worked with was incredible. I mean, just that alone is worth it. And capital improvements plan, you don't need to have any money to do that. You guys do it or the selectmen can put a group together to do it. It's, it's, it's not a lot to work on and we already have permission to do it.
Okay. I think that I would probably want to wait for Russell to be here to make the... Just to hear his perspective as the, as the select board ex officio before we like make a vote on how to go about that.
Each year when we vote for warrant articles to include, do we approve putting in twenty-five thousand dollars to some capital, you know, budget for a new police cruiser? Isn't that, is, in a sense, the capital improvement plan?
It is. And so I think that you would just simply see the warrant, like, do you vote for a thousand dollars to be put in the planning board capital improvement plan? Is that, do we need to do it that way?
You lost me there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. My understanding with the capital improvement plan is that it's something that needs to be on the warrant each year.
The dollar amount needs to be on the warrant. The, the, in your red notebook, there's a little, a little tiny bit of information there. And if you want me to get more information, I can get more and bring it to you next meeting. I've written and made about this at many, many town meetings. You're taking money, you're putting fifty thousand dollars in an account to buy a police cruiser. You're putting a hundred thousand dollars in to buy a fire truck. You're putting this money in for that and that and that. In a capital reserve fund, a capital improvements plan, you put a whole amount in. You make a decision year to year to year where you want that money to be spent. So we have a lot of money like sitting in an account getting what, three percent interest maybe? And we don't intend to buy for ten-year town road. It's sort of like writing a check out of your checkbook. You've got five hundred thousand dollars in there and, oh, I think today we'll buy blah, blah, blah.
I'm not talking about spending, I'm talking about building it. Like, how, how do you...
A warrant, it's a warrant article.
That's, that's what I was saying. Every year, we get a warrant article.
Certain amount of money on into the CIP, yes.
Right, and so that where, where it was like paving town roads and, you know, like restoration of historical records and that it would be like a planning board capital improvement fund.
I think, yes, but they, it would probably be more focused on the big ticket items. The fire truck, the police cruiser, the ambulance, stuff like that.
So...
And it's, it's generally a six or a ten-year plan.
Okay.
So...
Six or ten.
Interesting.
What is this money gonna be used for?
For for all of the like updated stuff that needs to happen, which we foresee probably needing to belong to the planning commission to be able to adequately write like a new master plan, which should be updated, I think, at the most every ten years. Yeah, I mean, we're thirty, thirty-six years out or something.
It has been worked on before, but it didn't...
It never got off the ground, yeah.
No, no, too much arguing. I was on board then.
Yeah, probably the software doesn't exist that was used for it either.
No software. I have lots of information, but no software.
So probably we'd be glad to look into hiring somebody to help us.
Probably. Realistically, I mean, I don't know. Here's my basic opinion is that I don't think anybody here is interested in like doing very stupid like embezzlement crap. Like, there's no reason we're gonna be irresponsible with the existence of the funds. Like, if we get a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, we build up a capital improvement, like, we, we need to use our discretion, we need to be frugal. Like, if we don't need to use it, we shouldn't buy anything with it.
You should, you lost me. But what do you, you talk about you having a thousand dollars in your account and then not buying?
Whether it's capital improvement or the planning, or just the planning board budget or anything like that, I think we're all capable of being responsible here. If we have money in our bank account, it doesn't mean we have to spend it. But we're foreseeing things that we may need to spend things, spend it on.
So the reserve fund or improvement?
We're talking about two different things, Jake. We're talking, there's a reserve, I mean, is the capital improvement plan the same thing as a reserve fund basically that you know?
No, it's like a bunch of warrant articles.
Capital reserve, capital improvements, are those interchangeable?
In my mind.
More or less, more or less.
So we're talking about two things. A capital improvement slash capital reserve fund, which is a savings plan that occurs and accrues over the years, which has to be voted in each year on the warrant. And the other thing we're talking about is simply the, the town planning board budget, which is annual and we don't keep accruing that. Like, if we, right now, we have a budget of two hundred dollars. If we don't spend any of it and the next year get two hundred bucks, it's not like we're all of a sudden have four hundred. It just goes away at the end of the year, so...
What is that reserve fund for?
The reserve fund is for, basically like long-term planning.
For the planning board?
Yeah, yeah. Planning, planning commission membership and legal fees and any consultants and anything that we need to do that takes...
Classes?
Yeah.
Books?
Yeah.
Consulting with a lawyer outside of the department.
Yeah.
There's lots of stuff that you guys aren't doing that you, you know, you might need to call someone for a soil test or something on a piece of property. All that money comes out of your...
For sure.
And, and no one would ever think that you were embezzling anything out of it.
Well...
I mean, you, you write, you ask for money for it and you give it to Sarah and Sarah writes a check and it shows up in the town report and everything, so don't feel that way.
Well, I mean, you're a Listen Center guy, you know, like it's a...
Yeah, but you guys are like way too obvious, you know? Yeah, that was...
I, I, yeah, I think basically we don't need to feel ashamed to have a budget, which we can use to their discretion.
We had five hundred dollars in most of the time, but we did things differently than you did. We used that money to pay for the stuff that you now have the client pay for. We used to pay out of it and then we got reimbursed. That was in the olden days.
Well, you had your own checkbook probably.
No.
No?
No, it was done through the...
Through the selectmen's?
Yeah.
So how's it different?
We used to pay for the filing and all that kind of stuff and then the client came in and paid for it after the fact.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, rather than, some people got lazy and then wanted the, the client to do all the work.
I, I think that, I mean, we've been doing both ways, depending on who the surveyor is and what's being done. But it seems like an awful lot of the time, there's a fair amount of good faith and like the checks are waving at one another through the mail and
I need to ask Sarah this question. When they fill out an application for permit, are they paying up front? Or are they paying you?
They typically don't pay anything until we get to look at it.
No, they pay when, they're supposed to pay when they submit their...
Yeah, I, I'm not entirely sure that that's, I mean, that's something that could change, but I still think that the function of this board is effectively volunteer-based and it doesn't cost the town anything to look at an application and say, sure, this looks like it makes sense or no, this doesn't make sense. What do you, what, what upsets you about that?
There are rules and regulations related to it.
Yeah.
Okay, town regulations, state regulations, and I'm trying to be gentle here, but I don't feel that anything really gets done correctly in this town.
I think that's, probably got some level of accuracy to it.
It's sort of like, you know, if you attend a selectmen's meeting, I, I would say that it's sort of like having a conversation at Thanksgiving dinner, oh yeah, we should do this, we should do that, we should do blah, blah, blah.